I'll call the order of the special meeting of the Finance Committee of the City of Winston-Salem. I want to first thank everyone for taking time out of their busy Monday afternoons to be here. We only have one item on the agenda, which we'll start in a second, and I will also remind everyone at 6 o'clock this evening, we have the special committee of the whole meeting, I guess it's a committee of the whole.
Mr. Director, councilman.
To go over the, or the council to go over a bond referendum. So, we certainly will be finished by then, and that meeting will take place at 6 o'clock. With that, I'm going to turn this over to Lee Garretti, our city manager, who's going to walk us through it. Thank you, Lee.
Thank you Chairman Clark, Mayor joins, members of the Finance Committee. Today, we're here to talk about some exciting changes to our arrangement for our baseball stadium. I'm going to give a quick overview, and then I'm going to turn it over to two people who know a lot more about it, Jeff Lassiter, who's the president of the Dash, and Lisa Saunders, our chief financial officer. This is, though, a very, very good arrangement for taxpayers. We're going to redo our lease and guarantee that we have Major, Minor League Baseball here for the next 25 years without any subsidy from the taxpayers. I think it's very important that everybody hear that. And it is almost unheard of of any city or county-owned municipal stadium in the country, whether it's the Durham Bulls, whether it's Charlotte, whether it's Raleigh, the Mudcats, whether it's even the Chicago White Sox, to have an arrangement where the taxpayers are not covering all or most of the capital cost of the stadium. We are very fortunate here to have a situation where we own the stadium, the taxpayers own the stadium, but the full cost is being paid for by the team. A few little background of where we were and where we are today. Back in 2009, when we were finishing the stadium, the Dash secured a $15 million construction loan to finish off the stadium. From the beginning, it was very clear to all of us and to the Dash that that was a short-term construction loan that would be restructured and extended into a much longer-term loan once the lending conditions were better. As you remember, in 2009, the lending conditions were about the worst they've ever been. Recently, in the last three or four months, the Dash approached the city about restructuring that loan, refinancing it, in conjunction with a sale of the majority interest in the team. Remember, the city owns the stadium, but the team is owned by investors. They're proposing to sell the majority interest in the team to the Chicago White Sox. This ownership group that would be led by the White Sox would purchase controlling interest in the stadium, in the team, for $7 million. $2 million of that would be used to pay down that $15 million loan. And then they're asking the city to refinance the other 13 million. We would have a new 25-year lease where the Dash would make annual payments to the city of about $1.8 million, which would cover all of the city's costs. The Dash team would still be responsible for all operations and maintenance of the park. Again, we would not need taxpayer funds to restructure this lease. And, based on the financial projections that Ms. Saunders will go over, we estimate that over the 25-year life of the lease, the city has the potential of actually netting about $4 million, the difference between what our costs are to finance and what the lease would be. In addition, to make sure we have better security on the loan, the new ownership group, which is again backed by members of the Chicago White Sox and other investors, would provide a letter of credit to the city for the first four years of $1.8 million. So again, the whole, all of the lease payments annually would be covered by a letter of credit. In addition, we've also made sure that the Dash owners could only receive a profit in any year after they've fully paid the city. In summary, this extends baseball for 25 years, it guarantees that we have a first-rate team affiliated with one of the best Major League franchises in the country, and it secures it in such a way that the taxpayers are protected. And I think it's a very good opportunity for the city and the Dash. And at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Lassiter to talk a little bit about how successful the stadium has been.
Jeff, if you, please give your name and address for the record.
Jeff Lassiter, 5176 Huntcliff Trail, Winston-Salem.
Thank you.
Council members and mayor and city staff, certainly an honor to be here with you today of this great news. I've had several speaking engagements around the city, and my talking points have been that it's a two-way win streak. It's a win for the City of Winston-Salem's placement and position on the stadium, but it's also a win for the Winston-Salem Dash organization to have that security and be able to attract very astute sports investors. You know, we're not dealing with people that don't know anything about sports and the success of financial sports entities. The White Sox, of course, the majority owner in the White Sox and voting member is Jerry Reinstorf, who's the only man in the country that is the majority owner and leader of two professional sports teams in major sports in, here in our country. He also is the majority and managing partner of the Chicago Bulls. So, to be able to attract that group of people is a tribute to our city. I had a reporter ask me this morning, is why Winston-Salem? And this is what I'm here to tell you, is why Winston-Salem and why the Winston-Salem Dash, for someone of that magnitude to invest in us and ensure themselves a 25-year relationship with our community as a whole. And I think by the numbers is the best way to do it. In 2010, is when the stadium opened, that wonderful April night, and until today, I was really concerned we wouldn't have weather like we did April 17th in 2010 for this Thursday night, but I think it's shaping up well. We've had 60 sellout crowds, we've averaged over 4,500 people in average attendance since 2010, and just over 1.2 million people have been through the gates at BB&amp;T Ballpark. That is the fastest that any Class A Advanced stadium has reached, 1 million in attendance. This is the second part of why. The Dash are community partners because we know that the community as a whole has created this great opportunity in the finest ballpark in America in Minor League Baseball. The Dash have donated over, to 1,100 charities, over 300 different organizations, and over $400,000 in cash and gift and kind gifts since 2010 and 2011. These slides are built off the pillar of our success, and we have five pillars of those successes, and one of them being community involvement. We could not be here without the wonderful public-private partnership that has come to be about BB&amp;T Ballpark. In that community relations effort, the Winston-Salem Dash, over the years, has participated in our NVP educational program. This year, over 40,000 students in eight different counties in 2,000 classrooms will participate in the Winston-Salem Dash's NVP educational program. Remember, these are facts of why some astute investor from the Chicago White Sox and their ownership group would want to invest in the City of Winston-Salem. Ballpark promotions, every Friday night, as fireworks, as we've all grown to love that part of our ballpark, but other great promotions from the Winston-Salem State University Spirit Week to Fantasy Fan Week that BB&amp;T, our good partners at BB&amp;T, actually renamed the stadium one time a year on the last game of the year, to someone that has won that sweepstakes, which is a really neat event. Endgame entertainment is another very important pillar of our company, is that we provide affordable, quality, family entertainment. Our commitment is to provide the citizens of Winston-Salem and the surrounding area a wonderful entertainment venue. And not just baseball, but as if you would ask my entertainment director, he would tell you that it was entertainment with a side of baseball. He wants to be the center act of the entertainment process for this great venue, to provide an entertainment outlet to not only our community at a whole that's here, but also use this as a great attracting tool for recruitment of new people to come and make our community bigger and better place to live. Ballpark events, as we know that there are 70 home baseball games, and on, knock on wood, on good years, we may get two or three playoff games to max out probably at about 73 or 74 games. That leaves us several more days of the year. We like to call it our 250 rule, that there are 250 other days that we need to be doing other things at the ballpark. And we've had a number of things, from high school graduations to high school proms to 5K races, probably most exciting announcement in 2014, Susan G. Coleman will be taking the largest 5K race in the city. We'll start and finish at BB&amp;T Ballpark with just over 10,000 participants. We've had red receptions, great holiday get-togethers, high school baseball, and college baseball. Winston-Salem State signed a five-year relationship with us to play their entire home season and also practice at the ball field as well. High school baseball, we have approximately about eight or 10, between eight and 10 high school games a year. Last year, if you take out the 70 games of baseball that we played there, I think we played 69 with one rain out, we did 247 events last year at the ballpark. That 250 number is where we want to be, and we want to be north of that on an annual basis. And hopefully, we'll have some more exciting things coming along from the outside events. But I want to remember that this is not just used for 70 baseball games, but 247 events were used outside of the 70 baseball games. That's getting pretty close to 365 when you put them all together for the facility to be used as a community asset. Then I talk about our partners. I went to a Minor League Baseball winter meeting in 2011, and one of the topics of meeting was corrupt and bankrupt sponsors was the topic of the meeting. And I was very interested to learn what it was about, and it was about the association of how you deal with those things happening with one of your sponsors. Well, I kind of chuckled under my breath and actually looked up and said how blessed we are here in the City of Winston-Salem of the sound community corporate support that has come to this ballpark. Every one of the players in our community are supporting us from a corporate standpoint and supporting this initiative to be able to look at the opportunity that in 25 years this ballpark is paying for itself. And the community partners are a key part of that, and you see some of the names listed there. Certainly, that's not an all-inclusive list, but certainly the leaders in our partnership opportunities at the ballpark. This is something that I take very dear to heart and believe that this is another huge key reason this ballpark has been so successful. The Winston-Salem Dash is, one of our pillars is unsurpassed customer service at all levels. And in 2011, we were the first Minor League Baseball team to ever hire Disney Institute. We wanted to have them evaluate our entertainment venue. As we all know, Disney's pretty good at it. An interesting stat that came out of that, 75% of the people that go through their gates on an annual basis have been through their gates before. That was mind-boggling to me. As expensive as Endeavor, as it is, it's the third most expensive event that an American family will participate in, from their house to their car, then their trip to Disney, that 75% of the people had been through the gates before. And it's because of sustainability, and they contribute 100% of their success to the people that work for their organization. And they spend a tremendous amount of initiative in training those individuals and having those individuals become loyal to their brand to represent it. We were very, it was a very interesting month-long process with them. They came back and told us that we do a phenomenal job of training, but we don't do a very phenomenal job, good job, of awarding our employees and recognizing our employees. We've had over 1,000 part-time workers work at that baseball field in the last four years. That's a pretty big number. There are 30 full-time jobs that were created because of this, with the Winston-Salem Dash's front office. And we have to give those people skills to make our customer service experience different at the ballpark, because we believe the highest level of customer service experience will create a level of sustainability, and it has. Just over 300,000 people come through the park in any given year. But we also were recognized by one of our partners, BB&amp;T Bank, and after the first year of our employee recognition on a monthly basis and our year-end employee, the second year of BB&amp;T has come forward, and this will be the third year of it, and they give them cash rewards to be able to have the highest level of customer service at the ballpark with their name on it. And so our commitment to unsurpassed customer service is another reason that we would be able to invest this great opportunity for our community. The ballpark is a big reason. The Chicago White Sox's Minor League, Class A Advanced home record since 2010 is the second-best in all of Minor League Baseball. It's the first in Class A Advanced, but all of Minor League Baseball's home record, it's the best. A lot of people say that Minor League Baseball is for development purposes, but nobody likes to lose, and winning is a way that they feel that has made their organization stronger. And that comes from the environment, that comes from the facade. In 2010, BB&amp;T Ballpark was named Ballpark of the Year. In 2010, we were also named, the Winston-Salem Dash's front office was named Organization of the Year from Baseball Digest. And the awards continue, and the awards are what we can thank our community for, because I can promise you that anybody that's ever come to judge something, if they came to an empty one, I don't care how nice it is, it would not be a successful opportunity of bidding for something. So, the people that have come and seen the rewards and provided the awards to this organization, we contribute that to the wonderful attendance and the environment that it's created, and we also contributed that for the White Sox being so interested in the City of Winston-Salem. That concludes my presentation. As on behalf of the organization, I want to thank the Finance Committee for being great partners through this process. We are very clear that we understand the initiative of this not engaging taxpayers' dollars at any means, and we honor that, and we appreciate the city leaders of their responsibility to protect the citizens of our community. And we look forward to this great, long, 25-year relationship. Upon your approval, we ask that, we ask for your approval, but certainly, we would look forward to a wonderful relationship and for the community to be able to embrace the astute sports investors that are becoming a part of this organization. The community should be very proud of what we've created here. I can take a few questions, or I can move along and let Lisa talk nuts and bolts.
Any questions, Ms. Burke?
Yes. It's very nice that we have been such a good city and we have officials who support, who voted for it when some people doubted, and also some said, when we're in the situation that we're talking about today. I'm interested, when you talk about investors using the taxpayers' dollars, how many, tell me a little bit about your investors, if they want to invest into the team?
We presented that to a group of investors that invest in the Major League team. All investors that invest in sports teams in Minor League Baseball have to be approved by all Major League owners and Minor League owners. It's voted on by the person of authority. So, even if I wanted to buy a small, little percentage of the team, I would have to go through the approval process for Minor League Baseball. And we wanted to attract a special group of investors that knows what they're investing in, and that's why we've continued our relationship with the Chicago White Sox. And we presented that to their ownership group. A lot of people sometimes are misled about how Minor League and Major League teams are owned. There is always going to be someone that is in charge of the ownership group, but the Chicago White Sox are a prime example. They have over 100-plus investors in their organization. And we targeted, for our investment group, we targeted astute business sports owners. And that is what we were able to raise the cash on for the infusion of cash and the conversation that Lee presented earlier. Our ownership, current ownership group, has taken no cash out of this deal. The new ownership group of professional sports investors will be paying down operational debt and, of course, the additional dollars on the original $15 million loan.
Mr. Chairman, just to give me some idea, when you talk about investors, how much are you allowed to tell this? How much, as an investor, do you put into it?
The minimum investment of the shares that we sold were $250,000.
Do you, in this city, do we have any investors in Winston-Salem?
We have four residents that are still in our ownership group, and they will always be in the ownership group.
And you know, those who know me know I'm going to ask this question, are there any minorities? When I say minorities, I'm talking about are there any blacks? Are there any Asians? Are there any women?
There are. There are at least two of the three categories that I have met of those that are satisfied.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, Lee. Jeff, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of City Council. I'm going to walk through the presentation, and I'm going to speak more to the financial transactions historically and what has been proposed. First of all, the City Council has been asked to consider three items. One, to provide $13 million to refinance the existing ballpark construction loan, and that's the $15 million developer loan that we keep referring to, that the new investors are going to pay $2 million down on. So that's the $13 million refinance we're talking about. Secondly, we're being asked to replace the current leases with new leases. The current lease is the $12.7 million lease, and the new lease would be 13. We're going to replace the old and the new with two new leases. Those leases are structured so that the debt service or the debt payments are covered with an equivalent lease payment. And third, we're asked to amend the Economic Development Incentive Agreement that was adopted in 2009. Next, let's just review just a little bit of the background of the ballpark. As Jeff mentioned, the ballpark opened to a very successful season in April of 2010. The ballpark cost $48.7 million. $8 million of land and stadium and grounds and improvements were $40.7 million. The funding of the ballpark, as we mentioned, construction loan from the developer with B of A of $15 million. In 2007, the city made an Economic Development Incentive payment of $12 million. Five and a half of that was from the sale of Ernie Shorefield, and we're receiving ticket surcharge and incremental tax payment back for the remainder from the team. In 2009, there was an economic incentive of $15.7, of which, again, we're receiving a lease payment back from the team. $1.3 million came from the Millennium Fund, and $4.7 was from investors, so which equaled the $48.7 million. As a result of the 2009 Economic Development Incentives Agreement that was approved by council, the city provided in 2009 $15.7 million, and at that point in time, we became the owner of the ballpark, the grounds and the stadium. The city also borrowed $12.7 million that was amortized over 25 years. It's a 15-year term note. Currently, the interest rate on that note is less than 1%. And there, again, those payments are to match the debt service payments at that period of time. The city leased the ground and the stadium of $12.7 over a 25-year term, and the debt service on those payments are about $1 million. So the city's been asked by the team to restructure the financing. The team owners are seeking to simplify and realign the capital cost of the team and the ballpark. As been said, the Chicago White Sox investors will be buying a controlling interest, and they'll invest $7 million into the ballpark. $2 million will be paid off on the construction loan, again, that's the $15 million loan that's being paid down to 13, and $5 million will be paid, will be paying off other debts that the team has. We're going to, would like to replace the construction loan with a long-term financing. The city is asked to provide $13 million to actually purchase the leasehold right, there is currently a capital lease, and additional assets. We, again, will pay off the construction loan that's payable to B of A, and new lease agreements for the stadium and land, again, will be 25 years from the closing date, and we would increase the lease payments to $1.5 million, which would cover the current and the new leases. The city's also been asked to modify the 2009 Economic Development Incentive Agreement. There would be a reduction of the annual surcharge to $175,000, but we also would extend the lease term for five years. We're also being asked to replace the annual tax payment with a payment in lieu of taxes of 93.1, again, that would extend over the term, so we would still recoup all the funds that were done in 2009, or that were given in 2009. So next, how are we going to do this? The next slide is about the proposed financing. We are looking at issuing a taxable, or I should say borrowing, something called a limited obligation bond. $13 million is the construction loan payoff. We're estimating about $250,000 in issuance costs, so we actually would be borrowing $13,250,000. The structure of this financing is very similar to what we did last summer with the 2013 limited obligation bonds. It's simply an extension of the trust indentment. Very similar 25-year amortization, very favorable terms. We have worked with the Y River Group, a financial advisor, and have already solicited proposals to various banks. We have gotten favorable terms from BB&amp;T. So, at the April 14 Finance Committee meeting, I will be bringing, assuming we approve this, another resolution to ask for approval to apply to LGCD for the financing and commitment with BB&amp;T. The collateral on this financing is secured by the lease payments, subject to annual preparation and a deed of trust, and the properties included in that deed of trust are, again, an extension of what's already pledged, City Hall, Public Safety Building, Lowry Street, and we will now be adding in the collateral of the ballpark. So a preliminary calendar of the tasks that have to happen are: Monday, April 7, there will be a public hearing, and City Council will consider, one, an amendment to the Economic Development Incentive Agreement, and, two, the new lease agreements. On April 21, City Council would set a public hearing to issue the limited obligation bonds. On April 28, that's the proposed closing date for this transaction of the new lease structure and the Economic Development Incentive Agreement. On May 5, there'd be a public hearing to issue the limited obligation bonds, and local government commission would consider approval of the borrowing and a closing in June. That's what a preliminary calendar would look like. So in summary, we're restructuring necessary to replace an original construction financing that was done in the peak of the 2009 recession. Long-term financing and Chicago White Sox investors' capital will put the city-owned property, or the city-owned ballpark, in a much firmer financial situation. The ballpark would continue to be owned by the city, with lease payments estimated to cover the floating rate debt service for the debt payments. No taxpayer fund to subsidize the ballpark, with the team owners paying approximately $1.8 million to the city for the next 25 years. We would also have in place a letter of credit of $1.8 million to secure those payments for four years, and it could be reduced to 1.2 if all the payments are made in a timely manner in four years, and then another four years, .8, or 800,000. And last, the city would be guaranteed to keep the team for 25 years.
Any questions? I have a few comments, but I'll, any questions from anyone? Ms. Burke?
Excuse me.
I heard you say, Ms. Saunders, guarantee to keep the team. Tell me what guarantee you actually have that we will be able to do with.
Well, in the lease agreement, there's a provision. I may need Angela's city attorney's help with that. That would keep the team intact for 25 years.
That is correct. It's not only in the lease agreement, but it's in the restated and amended incentives agreement as well.
Because at one time, we paid something one place and not have it another place. Are we sure what we're doing? It's in both places. Who else in it? Who else reviewed this? Did anyone else review what we're doing?
I've reviewed it, as well as the city attorney and outside counsel as well.
Outside, what outside counsel?
We have engaged, the city attorney's office engaged Parker Poe from Charlotte to do the review. The local attorneys were conflicted.
Thank you. I know we have a good law office here in the city who works hard to get that. But I want to make sure somebody else advised, looked at besides those who've looked at it so many times. Then next thing, Mr. Chairman, and members of the committee, and Mayor and other council people, when you talk about limited obligation bonds, and then we're going to, not too long from now, talk about bond referendum, how would you help citizens not be confused by what we're talking about here?
Sure. The limited obligation bonds, the actual collateral would be the buildings, would be the actual essential assets of the city. A bond referendum are voted upon bonds that are backed by the good faith and credit of the city of Winston-Salem.
If by chance something happens, Mr. City Manager, see I'm referring to him now. Of those buildings we are putting up for collateral, those are some of our important buildings. That's us.
That is true. It is, we are, it is a mortgage. In simple terms, it's a mortgage on those assets. If for some reason the city didn't pay, the bondholders could foreclose on those properties. But I think that's highly unlikely.
We take your word. And I had one other question, Mr. Chairman, about the favorable terms. Would you go over those favorable terms?
Sure. The commitment letter that we have with BB and T is a 15-year term loan that's amortized over 25 years. The variable or floating rate of the note is LIBOR plus .74%, which basically means it's less than 1% that we're paying on the note.
Thank you.
Mr. Montgomery?
I have a few questions. One of them was attached to the guarantee as well. I know it said it's written in both documents, but specifically what happens? What's the penalty for not having the team for the duration of the 25 years?
If the team decides to leave, of course, before the expiration of the 25-year period, then, of course, there would be a violation of not only the lease agreement, but the incentives agreement as well. And it would cause a callback of the incentives that have been provided.
Is it a percentage of that, or is it total?
Just the entire amount.
Okay. Also a question in terms of particularly looking at this agreement compared to the previous agreement. What, if any, is the difference that will be coming to the city compared to what will be coming to the city at the end of the terms of this agreement and the end of the terms of the previous agreement?
Are you referring to the payments that the city would be receiving? Well, in the original agreement, the lease payments were about $1 million per year annually over a 25-year term. The new agreement, they're $1.5 annually in addition to the payment in lieu of taxes of 93.1 and the $175,000 ticket surcharge. So comparatively, it's $1.8 million that we receive annually over a 25-year term.
And I'm trying to see, you stated before that the $4 million, we have opportunity to net $4 million at the end, by the end of this agreement. At the end of the previous agreement, what would that number have been comparatively?
I really...
We'll have to get, we have that information. We just have it in front of us. We'll have to get you that information.
Okay.
But not much.
And I just think that that's something to at least have as part of conversation. And then the entire dollar amount of debt that would be held by the city is exactly what?
Well, it's 13 plus, right around 26 million.
Okay.
I think, Dan, did you have questions coming?
Yes, thank you. Just some technical questions. How will the $13.25 million of bonding in this case affect the city's debt capacity overall?
It should, you know, it's secured by the collateral of the debt. It really doesn't affect it at all. We're not using any of our, as compared to the special obligation bonds, which use the sales taxes collateral and it use capacity. This really shouldn't have any effect on the capacity at all. It's just using the collateral.
What, why were, was this particular type of bond selected as the best choice for this transaction?
It was honestly, it was the most economical form, the most cost-effective, and using the security of the ballpark.
Do we have other bonds currently that are secured by these properties?
Yes, we do. This is an extension of several other financings that have been used generally in the public facilities area.
So this wouldn't be a unique use of city properties?
It would not. We actually, it actually, the original, it's the Fifth Amendment to the 2001, what used to be certificates of participation.
And the reason I ask that is obviously there's symbolic significance. And if this were unique in using these properties as security, then I'm sure that would raise questions. But if this is routine, then it's, then that, there is no symbolic significance. Questions about the guarantee of the team remaining here? Legally speaking, what entities are the guarantors of that promise, of that commitment?
In terms of the amended and restated incentives agreement, and for all practical purposes, the lease, it is the Winston-Dash, Brookstown Development Partners, Sports Menagerie LLC, Sports Menagerie Corp., all of the entities basically involved in the transaction.
And which of those entities actually owns the franchise, the right to operate a team in the Carolinas?
I think that's changing. I don't know if Jeff wants to speak to that or not.
What's that?
And what assets are held by those entities?
The assets would be, come from the franchise itself. It's certainly, the whole discussion of the franchise is still a part of the Sports Menagerie LLC. And the franchise throws off revenue, revenue sources that would be the other sources.
But just to be clear, the entity that holds the franchise itself is subject to this guarantee? So the franchise is on the table as part of the asset of the...
That's correct. Right now, it says Sports Menagerie LLC, and as Jeff indicated, that will be becoming the Winston-Dash. So yes.
This actually goes to, I think, the line of inquiry that Mayor Frotten Burke was raising, that we actually have the guarantee that this, that the franchise must remain here for the duration of the week.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Jeff, you had a question, comment?
What kind of modeling have we done for anticipating a rise in LIBOR rates?
We actually have averaged over the term of the loan a 4% rate. We felt that was very good. Recently, when we paid off comps, I guess it was last year, the average of those over 20 years, and when we use the floating rate was 3.5. So we felt like 4% was a good average rate.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Oh, Mr. Montgomery.
I have one other. I know it was stated that at the beginning of this, the original agreement, that it was anticipated that there would be a need to come back and do this type of refinancing. Is there any anticipation that within the next five years that we will be back again with a similar refinancing of any type of restructuring?
I'm not aware of any, any need.
Well, I just wanted to understand, because they said that that was anticipated before, but is that, we know things happen, but is that something that's anticipated at this point?
No. This secures the financing long-term in a way that shouldn't require that short-term kind of issue that's been there the last two years with the team.
Mr. Taylor, you had a question, comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two quick questions in reference to the economic development incentives agreement of 2009. I'm seeing here that there was a proposition to reduce the annual ticket surcharge to $175,000 throughout the extension of the new lease. Give me the current ticket surcharge.
$350,000.
Also, there is a proposal to replace the annual tax payment with a pilot payment of $93,100. And if you can also give me the current annual tax payment.
It actually is 93.1.
Same thing. Thank you.
Okay. Lisa, those are incorporated in that 1.8 million, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. Any other questions? I got a few questions, comments. Let me just touch on a few things. This went over quickly, but let everybody, remind everybody, the local government commission, which is an organization created by the state of North Carolina, has to approve any borrowing that we as a city do. And so we can't actually sign the loan agreement until they approve it. They have to have 30 days notice or 60 days notice, whatever. And that's why she gave you that schedule. If you want to know why we're waiting so long, we have to notify them. They meet periodically and do their thing. Dan, you raised a question about the collateral. I believe when we bought Lowry Street, I think we modified it then to the tune of $12 million to refurbish that building. I believe it's the last time we did it. And I think, while this hasn't been mentioned, Jeff kind of touched on it. The real reason the team wants to be here is we have probably the nicest single A stadium in the country with, you said, the quickest team to get to a million visitors. What the White Sox really like about here is this is a very, very successful market. And if they were not here for whatever reason, I think we would have people backed up wanting to come here because it is as nice as it is. Let me just, first off, I want to thank the mayor and Councilmember Adams that helped serve on the kind of the ad hoc committee we had on this, which we started meeting, I guess, January or so. We kind of got through Christmas holidays and did all this. So thank y'all both, and to our attorney and to Lisa and everyone else that was involved. Not to relive old pain, but for those old folks here, and I see Ms. Burke and me and Dan and the mayor.
Be careful.
We were here when this first came, and I can assure you.
I got us all in there.
Now, we're serious here, and maybe sometimes people say things and it's not intended for a joke. I think all of you are going to get old one day.
I hope so.
And if you live long enough, you'll get as old as I am.
Yes, ma'am.
And when I ran, you know what the old folks like me say? You put the young ones beside us, we can outbeat you all, you understand? I know who said it over there, over there. And if we're talking serious business, maybe somebody would sit here and not say anything. But when you start talking about age, our country, most older folks, and I knew you meant old, who had been a...
Old counsel, yes.
I understood that. But some always in their heads as if though they're not going to get old tomorrow. And I want to just say this. If you really want something to happen, it's the older citizens whose shoulders you own. I hope you understand that. And I hope you who may think it's a joke, it's not anything funny. And a lot of these citizens whose money you're talking about going to use, they'll be the ones who've been carrying this city. And that's the money that you're going to use for some of the older taxpayers' money.
Thank you, Ms. Burke.
Mr. City Manager, it's nothing funny with your staff and everybody. You can, you can have, and these other ones up here, they represent people. They'll decide how long they're going to stay around. Thank you.
Anyway, for those folks that were not here back in 2008, this was in the depths of the Great Recession. The baseball thing fell apart. And I can assure you, it was a very, very difficult time. And I think the fact that we were able to resurrect it and get it completed is a testament to a lot of hard work by a lot of folks. But I will tell you, at the time, it was not the ideal situation, but it was the best we could do at that time. We're now back, if I can use these more normal times, so that we can do it right. What we heard from the White Sox is they wanted something very simple. You folks own the stadium, and we'll rent it from you. And that's not the way it was prior to, or the way it is now. We actually have a construction loan that a third party took out on our property that if he defaults on the construction loan, we lose our stadium. It is a very complicated thing. And what we've done here is very straightforward. It's like probably every other stadium in the country. We own it, and we're going to rent it. And that's, I think, to keep in mind that the White Sox, and I say White Sox, meaning this ownership group, want it. Just make it simple for us, guys. You guys own it, and we'll rent it. I particularly like the fact that the folks we're renting it to, if you're going to rent property, it's nice to rent it. People have a little money. That way, you're more, you're more assured they're going to pay you. We have a much more financially secure organization that we're renting it to. So I think that's a second good point. Trying to think of any other things. And just that, I will say, and I have sat here 12 years. I think expanding the landfill and the baseball stadium were probably two of the tougher decisions I have made in 12 years. But I will tell you, I think the courage that we went through and all the errors we took were worth it because I don't know, well, certainly this has been a win-win for the city, no doubt about it. I hear that all the time from folks. I'm so glad we got it done. And I think if we can get this done, we will secure it so that we don't have to worry about this in five years or 10 years or whatever. So I think it's a good package. We're getting, I think, Lee, you told me, City of Durham gets $150 a year, and we're getting $1.8 million. It continues our commitment to the citizens of Winston-Salem that this, that the event will fund itself, that the folks that use the stadium and buy the popcorn and watch the games will fund it. I think it's been a win-win for the city. And I think this is just the last step we need to do to get it done. So, yes, ma'am, Mr. Adams, you were...
I'll let you finish first.
I'm finished. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Reading the document, I saw that, and I'll ask the question first. It was noted that there are two times during the year that the city can have public events for the public, the good of the public. I want to know, had we done this previously, or is this part of the new agreement? And if it was part of the original agreement, did we have two public for the good of the public events for the citizens of Winston-Salem?
I'll be happy to answer that question.
Thank you.
It was in the original agreement back in 2009. I'm not sure that that provision was ever used, but it certainly has carried over from the 2009 agreement to the draft that's before you today.
Mr. S...
We have, there have been public events open to the public for free. Our movie nights every year are titled by a sponsor who pays for that event to be open to the public and free. And there have been about two of those every year. That's how the majority of the free public events have been used.
Does the Dash organization decide?
What, Jeff, you have another comment on that?
Yeah, the other one is, of course, our open house this Saturday is open to the public for free. We actually serve concession food at that event. And that event, as Kurt reminded me, has been for the last four years as well.
Does the Dash group get to decide what the public events are? Or do they work in collaboration with the city attorney Carmen, Mr. Garrity? Or what? I didn't see that in there, in the document. And that's why I'm asking this, because if we own the stadium, then I think we should have some type of say, whether it's Parks Recreation Staff or somebody, helping to make the decision as to what the free public event is and how it's going to be coordinated in order to get the best bang for the buck, since we allow two public events a year.
I don't know how we participated or if we have in the past in deciding which events will be held, but we certainly can add that to the proposed draft if that's the desire of the finance committee or City Council.
That would be a commitment from the team that we would continue those events, whether the city chose to use those as their two days or not. If you had two additional days, those events open to the public will continue.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Now, do we need a motion to send this to council? I will, okay. So we need a motion to, where did I put my piece of paper? Excuse me. To recommend to council that we do the two new lease agreements and amend the economic development incentive and to go forward with the new loan.
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any other questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And one abstention. Okay, that's three in favor.